Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Village Board Meeting of November 10, 2014. Just a reminder, if there is a fire or emergency, please leave the building, exit out from near the building, clear your vehicle. Please do not move it until the supervisor can allow you to use the service pass now. Also, this is not a spoken building, so we must, we must not do it here, we must do it out there. Just, just one other reminder, it's tomorrow Veterans Day. The Veterans Day ceremony starts four points at 10:30 and ends probably 11 o'clock, 11:11. So, hoping you'll be there, and if any of you happen to be at the period yesterday when they had the, the suite of albums, the Atlanta Wind Symphony, and they played primarily Susan, Stars, The Stripes, Washington, the rest of them. It was just a wonderful one. We didn't say it this year, but really look out for it next year because it is just so much fun. I know through the years, it wasn't great.
It was.
It was.
Yeah, it had about 800 people up there. It was just a distance. Now, we get old too, later. It was, it was just a lovely night. You know, not as good as Dad's, too, but. Village Board.
Yes, good evening, everybody, and happy Veterans Day to all those veterans tomorrow. Thank you for your service. Approve the board meetings of October 27, 2014, please.
Motion to accept is presented.
Well, I have a, just one, one more that needs to be corrected on page three. It says that generator, and it should be that generation. So, I thought I was talking about the needles going in the market.
But it's generator.
It's the, it's the second from the bottom there, top there is the last sentence.
Oh, I got it.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
Aye.
Okay. I'm gonna start tonight with the, with the bills, and then I need approval for something else. Then I'm gonna introduce Chris Reno, who's a partner with our auditing firm. But I'm gonna start with the bills for the period of October 31 through November 10. They total 357,200.37. I do have one additional bill for approval, which I was just handed tonight, and that is for more contracting and consulting, and that's the third payment on the roof of Patchogue Theater. That's the 35,560. The five largest bills, that would be the first. The second one would be Cullen and Danaski for our 2014 order, 28,000. The third is Eastern Resource, 22,246.69, waste disposal. The fourth would be P S E and G, our electric bill, 17,201.32. And the fifth would be all-service electric, a work at our whole field, 16,032.99. If I could have approval of those bills, please?
Motion to accept. Second.
Aye.
I do have one general fund to loan, capital projects, 14,000, and the community development agency, 26,271.43, which we will, we will get back. If I could have approval for those loans?
Motion?
Second.
David?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I would like to introduce Chris Reno, who's a partner with Cullen and Danaski, which is our auditing firm. They finished our audit through the period of May 31, 2014, and Chris is gonna review the audit process with us.
Okay. Anyway, I'm hired by the board to render an opinion on their financial statements to provide reasonable assurance that they are relatively free material in the statements. That's in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. We also issued another report on the internal controls over their financial reporting under generally accepted, government auditing standards. We also issued a report on our federal monies that you receive, known as a federal single audit. Then there's a couple other letters that we also issued that are separate. The first one would be on material weaknesses and significant deficiencies. The village does not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, so therefore that letter is not issued. And then, we also take into consideration what the control is looking at with the state audits, and what we'll do is we'll put that into like a management letter, just so the board's aware of things that the control is gonna be going after. But basically, there's no real issues here. Just, they cite firms, you know, segregation of duties, so there's like one, just one comment on computer controls, and that's about it. So, it's really quick, because some villages have pages and pages of management comments sometimes they're never addressed. So, anyway, so I can stand back this report. I came to see it last year, just updated for the current year. Basically, the village operated at almost break even, a small loss, about $60,000, which means expenditures exceeded their revenues. And if you look on the column 2013, down to the second to last line, that's, what'd you call it, half a million dollars? That's, that was used to balance the budget, so you were really anticipating on losing a half a million dollars in the year, but you only did 60, so that's, that's good. And based on that, that means you maintained your fund balance roughly, so we're still about 30% of next year's budget, which is excellent. And, you know, and, you know, you spent your budget right on, you know, you came up close like a 157 under, which is, it could, you're monitoring your budget. On the revenue side, you did have additional federal aid that you received for the hurricane damages, so that helped you out this year. And, but basically, it was where we're at, as far as the audit goes. Anybody have any questions?
The comment about the controls for the software or what have you, do you find that a lot in smaller villages?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, because, you know, you'd only deal with, you know, X number of people. And to have somebody else, you know, have the controls for one thing, not the others, it's almost virtually impossible, as long as there's some kind of oversight, someone's looking.
I mean, for us, for us to alleviate that comment, we would have to spend so much money for other personnel.
Right.
It just doesn't make sense for us.
Yeah, correct.
But as far as anything else, there's nothing else out there you see that we have a problem with?
No, everything seems to be in order. You're gonna have a solid staff over there.
Well, I think one of the things, too, is that we have in surplus, $3.6 million. What we did last year, there was a 3.7, we took $500,000 of that and put it into the budget for the upcoming year, and we'll do the same thing, essentially the $600,000 that we put in, and stabilize it. So, we take money from our surplus and put it into the budget so that we can manage to keep the taxes as low as we can keep them. You know, you hear a lot of talk about surpluses and surpluses. I think there's a very misunderstanding, even on that level, what surplus is for. What got us through the hurricane without having to borrow any money was the surplus we had. What gets us through the winters and the storms that we had is the surplus we had. There's our ability to manage our money that allows us to move funds from surplus on a yearly basis to tax stabilization. So, last year, the taxes were up 2. something percent, you know, and we put $600,000 in making sure, so you can continue to provide the services, do the things we do, you know, whether it's in the parks, the playground equipment, whether it's on Main Street when we hear the issues, sometimes public safety on weekends, being able to put additional people on. It all comes out of our ability to manage our dollars during the course of the year and create enough of a surplus to protect the residences. You know, you go up now onto Oxbo Road, the pavement of Oxbo Road, the other pavement is the city. So, there's always this negative that you hear about surpluses, but they're tremendously, tremendously important, the solvency of, you know, what we're able to do without that and without the hard work of Treasurer, Mr. Crozier, and more importantly, Edgar and Marty, and their staff in his office. I think you talked about that a number of times, the quality of what we should get out of it.
Oh, yeah, excellent.
Now, the other thing to realize with this order, this order, then, is that it's the state, this is the state mandated or our audit. It's not, it's not done because we particularly want to spend $28,000, it's done because by state law, this is the mandate on. So, Chris, I thank you very much. Any other issues you see within it that?
Well, you know, I'm in constant communication with you guys all year round, so if something else comes to my attention, I would definitely reach out to you.
What was, I have one question on the total sale of property. We have $70,000. Who's the, who's the seller?
The pitch seller.
Pitch 19?
We have to approve the sale of sales surplus.
Isn't that paid time by the day?
It was on Saturday.
Put it down. Again, the day end?
No, $70,000 is insurance you cover.
Yes, insurance.
That's insurance.
Yeah. Because it, because it damaged.
67, that's insurance.
That's just, yeah, that's just a heading that says sales.
Okay. All right. Okay.
So, FEMA will lead.
Any, any questions to the public, Mr. D.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
You know, we have, we have been to the land of audits for this past, past year, FEMA audits, financial audits, the EPA audits, and we've talked about the EPA audits various times. I, some people have come to me and said that they've been reading things online, how we're polluting the river based upon this EPA audit. I wish the people that were writing those things and making those assumptions could sit down and talk to myself, or talk to village attorney, don't understand what the audit was about. If you go, we had 22 deficiencies that the EPA cited this morning. With our last submission, issued by Cornell and by a consultant that we have online, we down to four letters. But I'd like to read to you some of the headings of those. Development procedures for documenting and maintaining records. Required third-party party certifications, present an annual report, submit the EPA and DEC certification for third-party certifications. Conduct a self-assessment, submit an annual report, submit EPA and DC certification. Bill verify stormwater outfalls. Develop a program to inform municipal employees and businesses of the general public. Develop written procedures for receipt. Now, these will be completed. Development inventory of post-construction stormwater management practices. Submit a certification that the self-assessments were completed, and they were completed. Requirements, submit a bi-monthly progress reports, aligning activities completed. Requirement, develop a written program to detect and eliminate illicit discharges completed. Requirement, develop a written program to address non-stormwater discharges completed. Requirement, develop a written program that provides equivalent, yeah, equivalent protection to the New York City, New York DEC Speedy's Construction General Committee completed. Requirement to develop written procedures for SWIP review for both construction and post-construction completed. Requirement to develop a written program that describes procedures for site inspection completed. Develop a program that ensures long-term operation and maintenance of management practices completed. Requirement to develop pollution prevention and haske program completed. Requirement to develop employee pollution prevention and good haske and training program completed. Requirement to develop an updated SWAP report in progress. You know, if you listen, they're all trying to just read. You know, development proceeds for documenting and maintaining records in progress, requirements for third-party certifications in progress, and requirements to submit EPA and DEC certification in third-party. Every one of them is papered to print, and none of them refer to anything to do with polluting of the Patchogue River, the polluting of the bay, or any of those things. It's purely and simply an audit of procedures. And I really get tired of hearing from people that I read on this blog, or I read on this comment, that this happened or that happened, when people never, ever ask the question about what it's about. All they do is make an assumption that there's a question, and a true question, not, not a criticism, but a question of process asked. That's all I can ask you to do. But to have it out there, that we're supposedly polluting the river, polluting the bay, is unconscionable. You know, it's unconscionable at best, and it's a down-low liar, as it was. And so, you know, if you read the stuff and you don't understand it, whether it be this, whether it be the, the village audit, we have a FEMA audit that's coming backwards, we have another controller's audit on fire issues that's coming backwards, any questions on any of those things? You know, if the black sheep's out front, on the side, but I think it's, it's time people began to ask the right questions, that they're not condemned for the wrong reasons. Okay, public hearing.
Notice of the public hearing before the board trustees, please take notice that the board trustees of the Village of Patchogue, pursuant to chapter 435, section 435-17A3 and 435-80 of the Code of the Village of Patchogue, shall consider an application to convert the use of 129 River Avenue, section 22204, 129-29, from a single-family dwelling to a multiple-family dwelling. If you require any information prior to the scheduled hearing date, please appear in person of Village 12, Fortune Baker Street. All persons interested in proposed application for change of use will be given an opportunity to be heard on November 10, 2014, 6 p.m., Village 12, Fortune Baker Street, Patchogue, New York.
Back in the office, remember, we were giving tables, we had a public hearing where we took the portions of River Avenue that were Zone D2 business and changed them to C residents, which is a multi-family residence. The purpose of that was, is that probably, if you go down that block, if there are 20 homes on that block, 19 of them are multi-family homes right now. 19 of them are in some sort of disrepair, and all of them are non-performing uses. So, when we decided that public hearing, we had discussions really about making it perform to what it was, or what it is, not what it was, which is, was a D2 business. And this is a request, 129 River Avenue is a two-family, has been converted and rebuilt. If you know the home, it's the first home on the right, and you make the turn, go on River Avenue, right next to the tracks on the east side. And it's been turned into a two-family. So, this is the public hearing about that version, make, bring it into conformity with the C residents, which is, which is a new. Any questions by the board, comments?
It's a big practical job done in that house. There was one a little further north than the other opposite side, so I also did a really good job, so, yeah, great improvement.
It really is. But any other questions, questions for the public? Motion to accept, the change?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
One, favorite?
Aye.
So, carry. Okay. Request approval to refund Dave and Anne Development LLC, 2,000, $18.96 for previously approved tax-didentary settlement. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Second. Favorite?
Aye.
Laura, I'm gonna ask you to go now.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we have representatives of the Garden Club here, ladies, as well as, we're gonna do this now, as well as an artist, Dave Rogers, who lives in Art Space. Dave recently completed a sculpture, and it's installed in the garden where there used to be an urn that I believe had cracked. And the Garden Club is kind enough to gift this to the village, and it will be our responsibility to take care of it and keep it in good shape. So, I have the gift agreement here, which is signed by the Garden Club and the mayor. It lays out the conditions of, and Mark Jeffers, the president of the Garden Club, read this and agreed to it, so I don't think I need to read it in the record or anything. So, I'd like to, would, shall I have everybody come up? I'd like to have, let me go down. So, I just wanted to introduce Dave and thanks. Well, maybe Dave will tell us, Dave will tell us about the sculpture. So, anyway, just introduce yourself, this is Dave Rogers.
My name is Dave Rogers, I'm a sculpture and installation artist, and I moved to Patchogue about a year ago. I was happy to be able to complete this project for the garden, for the Village of Patchogue, when the Garden Club came to me and asked me about doing this sculpture. And the sculpture itself is made out of donated pieces of metal from members of the Garden Club and locals who I know who live in the area. I did get offers for donations from other areas, and I said, no, I really want to keep all the metal from this area right here to make it really special. The idea behind the sculpture is to reflect on growth, so the sculpture itself is entitled Reflections on Growth, and it's about the reflections of growth in the Village of Patchogue, that even I've seen, just living here for a year, and hearing about the history of Patchogue. And so, there's a lot of incorporation also of, you'll see garden tools and things like that, because the Garden Club, obviously, you can see around Patchogue, is very active and busy within Patchogue and trying to make it beautiful, so I wanted to incorporate some of that into it. And I hope that everybody gets a chance to go by and see the sculpture. It stands at, I believe, 10 feet on its stand where it is now, so it's three feet wide and 10 feet tall.
I have a question, as I saw it up close for the first time yesterday. You've got those two sections, and then what, what are the things on top? They look like.
Those are ceramic, actually.
Are they? That's what I said to my mom.
Lisa Di Stefano, who is an Art Space resident also, me and her talked together because I do a lot of small public sculptures, and I have gotten into ceramics in the last couple of years, and I've been looking for a way to incorporate ceramics into my metal public sculptures. So, Lisa did the two domes that are sitting on top, which represent water. So, the top part is changed, or goes into these domes, which represents water, which is, you know, a symbol of life and a symbol of growth for artists. So, I wanted to represent that into the sculpture as well.
No, I, you know, I just think that, whether you're Art Space or yourself, or the Garden Club, what you people have brought to this community, this sense of, whether we're a center for the arts, we're a center for entertainment, we're a center for beauty, with what the Garden Club does, it just has become extremely important. It makes me, I'm myself, really proud to be part of the piece of what's going on around here. And when people like yourself can influence, where did you live before? What did you, you've been all over this, haven't you?
I, yes, I grew up in Manhattan, so I'm not from Long Island at all, and I was in the Army for 14 years. I traveled the world, I lived overseas for about 14 years total, in the Army, and afterwards in China for seven years. So, I'm new to Long Island, only been here three years, and a year at Patchogue.
But it didn't take you too long to become part of the art, we very, very much appreciate, appreciate your effort, appreciate what you give back to the community. So, David, thank you very, very much.
No problem. And if there's ever any problems with the sculpture, just contact me, and I can repair it on-site, it's not a problem.
Okay. We'll talk a little bit, there's still one, talk about doing something down in the parks.
Oh, yes, definitely.
He's got some good ideas, because after you talked to him, showed me a few things.
And, you know, we're working on the mural. I saw the photographs. The mural is almost, the outline is pretty much done.
It looks great.
Yeah, so the mural is coming along also, so we want to keep adding art to the village as much as we can, so thank you.
Very important. Thank you very much.
David, most importantly, do you love being a resident of the Patchogue Village?
I do. I'm gonna tell you the reason why I moved to Patchogue, and not because of Art Space, there's 35 Art Spaces across the country. The reason I moved to Patchogue, since I've moved on Long Island, Patchogue is the only village where the mayor, the trustees, people, big businesses in the village are very supportive of the arts. And to me, that's very important, because even other towns that have lots of arts, their village stays out of it, they don't care. So, that was important for me, and that's the reason why I moved to Patchogue.
That's great.
Let's commend it to you, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Just something for you guys, one other thing, too, is that we do have a celebrity in the audience, Miss Paula Murphy, who is Chamber of Commerce's Woman of the Year.
While we're on Garden Club, I know Carol, if you want to come up now and just let everybody know.
We did, the Garden Club is also very exciting.
Start with naming that.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Carol Tadella. I'm not actually a member of the village, I'm in East Patchogue.
That's okay.
But I'm very involved with Chamber and the Garden Club, and I have been for a very long time. But one of the functions of the Garden Club is to community outreach and to do things for the community. And many, many years ago, there was a Historic Houses of Worship tour, that was actually, I think, put on by the village and the Historical Society. And I went out on that tour, and I was so excited about it, and everyone I spoke to that went on that tour, and that was a big fortune to feature, and still speaks about how wonderful it was. So, I was determined this year, we've been talking about it, to make it happen again, and I'm here to say that it is going to happen.
Ann Sreezy was one I think that had protected it in, really badly.
So, on December 7, starting at 2:00 in the afternoon, at the Garden Club's gazebo, we will begin the tour, and right now, we have commitments from five of churches and the St. Valhalla Houses of Worship. So, we'll start at the United Methodist Church, walk down to St. Paul's, from St. Paul's, we'll go to Emmanuel Lutheran, Emmanuel Lutheran, we'll go to the Congregational, and then we'll end up at Temple Death Valley. And in each one of those places, the pastors and the rabbis and the rabbi will discuss, talk about their church and their traditions. We are working with the Chamber to try to divide the trolley for those people who may not be able to walk, so that's something that we're working on. Unfortunately, St. Francis had a schedule and issues, so they cannot participate. And also, what you can get back from David Kennedy Chamber, there's, I was back, I didn't find out until the other day that there is a church up on North Ocean Avenue, just a little bit more, that's Reese's, which no one was even sure that they're going to be shown to me.
I think it's the 7th day, I bet, this.
I think, yeah, I'm very glad, we reached after them, and I don't know, they may have been. And of course, it's been totally free except for Cambridge, so.
Oh, that's true. Oh, that's great.
What was the date?
December 7, it's a Sunday afternoon at 2:00.
Are you familiar? The sculpture on the lawn of Temple Death Valley was created by my college professor.
Oh.
I moved here and drove down Oak Street and went. I think I watched him maybe come over a lot. I think I watched him maybe come over a while. But just, I, when he built that, I didn't live here, so.
Sorry, we hope you all can attend and we look forward to doing this.
Thank you.
One of the things I mentioned, we're going to, Mr. Reno has said that he can donate whatever lights are short. We're going to light up the tree in the Garden Club, Terror Street. Some white lights, I think, is what you have. Is it tennis?
Yeah, we had three cases of white lights.
I was gonna tell you, tell me, I just wanted to hit it for the money.
Yeah, we all should be very happy. My secretary's feeling that tree feels so gourmet.
Right. That's great.
I just have a maximization. Do it with a tree guy in the one way or the other.
That's a great trick.
I'd like to just comment also that Mark Jeffers, who's the president of the Garden Club, just walked in.
Hi, Laura.
Introducing, I already did the exchange.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I heard it was 6:30, so I apologize for being late.
No problem.
So it's yours, it's yours.
Thank you for everything. It's ours. Thanks, Carol.
As you told me just about things that are happening, on Thanksgiving Eve, at the Lutheran Church up on Jane Avenue, there's an ecumenical service that's held. And each one of the Temple, Congregational Church, St. Paul's, obviously Lutheran Church, Mather, all the pastors of those churches will be up there. And it is about three to five minutes to an hour. But it really, they each have a reading. And I used to a little bit of talking about what Thanksgiving is all about. It is really a wonderful, I've done it every year. Last year, just because I was in Colorado, I've done it every year that I'm in an office, except for last year. And it really, if you have the time, if you really want to begin the holiday season as you should begin the holiday season, it is really a wonderful, wonderful activity to do. It's the Lutheran Church, it's up on Jane Avenue, towards Little Jane Avenue, go all the way up, it's on the right-hand side. And, Steve, you know, it just, sometimes you do some things that just really make you feel good when you're there with them. And that is one of those things. Thanksgiving.